Good to have you all here. Nice to have a full house for our June Connected State Board of Education meeting. This meeting is called for June 14, 2023 at 9:30 a.m., 450 Columbus Boulevard. It is now 9:33 a.m. and I'll call the meeting to order. I am Jeremy Boyce Walton and Private Service Vice Chair of State Board of Education. It will begin, please, by rising for the pleasure of the room.
(inaudible)
We have a slightly different agenda today to accommodate a couple of things, including the fact that I had to pitch a plate, and so I'm going to run out of the meeting earlier than I would. So we moved some things around that that needed to happen early. First off, though, recently reappointed and confirmed through the state legislature for another term on this Connected State Board of Education is Erin Benham. And so at this point, I'd like to have her sworn in to continue her service. Mike will come up in and perform that for us.
Do you, Erin V. Benham, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support it so long as you continue to be a citizen hero, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law and to the best of your ability, the duties of the office of the member of the Connected State Board of Education? So help you God.
Thank you. Congratulations. So wonderful to be able to watch Erin's, not confirmation, what do you call it? A confirmation hearing. And it's important to have your voice on this board, particularly as somebody who led classrooms for so many years as an educator. It's very important that we have your voice on the board. I appreciate your continued use of service with us.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, in quite a different order than we typically would, we do have some items requiring action that needs to be taken care of. So this meeting, per our bylaws, occurs in June of the odd number of years. It's all sort of language in our bylaws that says we need our organizational meeting at this meeting. First order of business for that is to elect our vice chair. And at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to nominate our vice chair. Yes, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to stand and, well, not stand, but nominate our current vice chair to continue in that position where she's done a wonderful job, our Erin Benham.
Thank you. It has been improperly seconded. Did you accept your nomination?
I did.
Very good. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, the chair will close nominations. All those in favor of the nomination to vice chair of Erin Benham, please do so by signing a "a."
Aye.
And the opposed, let the record reflect, with unanimous consent, we relax and move our vice chair. Congratulations. And you see why it was so important that we had to just warn it first. Absolutely. We do have a couple of other business items that we will return to. I do want to draw the board's attention to the fact that we will not have a July board meeting, as there are no items that are going to require our action in July. And I know you were hoping to come up here. We're going to give you that month off, but stay tuned for August. There will likely be activity in August, so we will get to that item. I am going to just acknowledge that typically this meeting would have been earlier, but we bumped it out a little bit so that we could be sure that session had closed before we had our June meeting. It was a very busy session, and I just want to commend our commissioner and team who kept up with a whole lot of moving parts, proposed legislation, even the department advance, but a whole lot of pieces that came from other corners of our state that needed to be attended to in terms of making sure people understood the impact and what things were going to really move us forward in advancing equity and excellence for education for all our learners, and those things that maybe needed some additional guidance around in our commission expense. Lots of times working on that with her team and virtual knowledge others during her report. There are some things that I think we are happy about that came out of session and we'll certainly learn more about it, but there's additional money going into education that is a good thing for our district. Certainly they were supposed to be pushed for even more then when it came out, but my quote for today comes from Tolkien, which says that "little by little one travels far." So I think we're taking steps. We're taking steps. There's certainly more to be done in order, we hope, to see, but we are taking steps in the right direction. All right. So with that, within our election, we are going to move to public participation. Are there any questions? Okay. So let's do that, and then we'll do our end of year presentation. Let's do the public participation. So vice chairman, we'll call the names of those that signed up for public participation. We have to come to the table, state your name for us, and make your comments. We do have a duty to your comments of three minutes. If you begin to go beyond three minutes, I will gently remind you that you have wasted your time. Our first speaker is Christine Rastak.
Morning.
I think Christine Rastak is a transsexual woman from a middle town. Today I wear the colors of the transgender flag. It is not my identity but who I am. However, this flag, along with the pride flag and that non-government flag, should not be part of our government property, including our schools. That should be only reserved for the American flag, a state flag, and a municipal flag. We've seen recent news of pride month videos being shown in our public schools. I believe parents should know about this ahead of time. Pride is a wonderful month, but unfortunately we are getting backlash, and I feel many critical and criticisms from people on both sides of the aisle. And this creates bad outcomes. I'm here to speak to say, let's, parents have a right to know, I'm trying to make the road easier for our LGBT Q students to make their life journey easier. And Grandview School System, by the way, sent home puberty kids to elementary school kids. Eight-year-old boys had puberty incidents in St. John's Kennedy Myers and Maggie Pads. Well, some fact of the matter is, no one born male can get pregnant after marriage or having any reproductive products. I sell this trans woman and all trans women included. I urge the Connecticut State Board of Education to send the memo out to all the local school districts. Please let them distract this. I'm trying not to be negative, trying to make the road better for our youngsters so they don't have to go through all the major strikes that I deal with. Thank you. I hope everyone will have a nice summer.
Thank you. Jennifer Benaventas.
She's Boyce Walton, Vice Chair Benham, Commissioner Russell Tucker, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Jennifer Benaventas, and I am the Professional Development and Education Coordinator for the American Federation of Teachers here in Connecticut. And I have served as an ASC Connecticut representative on the Educator Evaluation and Support Council for the past couple of years. I am here to make an urgent draft of Connecticut Guidelines for Educator and Leader Evaluation and Support 2023. The proposed recommendations before you have the potential to truly transform this. If we want the best rights of innovative teachers in front of our Connecticut students, we need a system that truly puts their support and development at the forefront. I'm proud of the work our council has done, and I'm proud of these guidelines. Despite each of the different stakeholders groups coming with different needs and perspectives, everyone had only one interest in mind, and that was to figure out how we could help our teachers help our students. The cooperative respectful culture that became the hallmark of our council meeting served as a model for district EDX, whose membership will be similarly varied, representing different needs but working toward a common goal. The new guidelines differ from the past in simple and fundamental ways. It is our work aimed to simplify the process, cut through unnecessary paperwork and checklists, to create a system that allows for differentiation based on educator need. We wanted to focus on professional growth with an emphasis on quality feedback and support. At the heart is a system that will support teachers and leaders and will help to build and maintain trust. This council, this process, and these guidelines are a model for states across the country of what true collaboration can look like. When there is partnership, honesty, kindness, and courage, we can truly be powerful agents for powerful change. And I am proud to have worked with the Department of Ed and the other stakeholders in Connecticut in this ambitious project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Irving.
I am the president of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers. I am the facilitator of the 2K Health Council of Educators of ASC Connecticut. And I was a very proud, and a very proud member of the Educator Evaluation and Support Council. It's a pleasure to be here, Chairman Boyce Walton, Vice Chair Benham, and Commissioner Russell Tucker, and all of the distinguished members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We began to work in March 21, when I had the honor of being named to this council on behalf of ASC Connecticut. I have the pleasure of working with the very thoughtful and engaged members of this council. We updated the evaluation system for certified educators in Connecticut in collaboration through our very own Erin Benham. Each member of the council carefully represented an important set of viewpoints and initiatives. We were very aidfully facilitated and worked under the expertise of the Department of Education. We studied, learned, discussed, presented, listened, argued, and created a set of guidelines that promise to be a national model for educator evaluation that is effective, that is efficient, and improving student outcomes and certified practice. I am proud to be associated with this work. It was hard. It was important, and it took a long time. The legislature recently approved the necessary changes, and now you have the opportunity to consider our work and launch it into place. We believe the impact will be of potential, not only on educator growth and student achievement, but also on teacher retention and shortages. The guidelines respect differences between districts, individuals, roles, and careers. The guidelines respect the limited time available during busy school day by limiting paperwork and compliance sets that don't improve professional practice. We have, being said, included and emphasized action sets that actively promote professional growth in educational practice. Thank you very much for the opportunity for this work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, distinguished members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in strong support of the Guidelines for Educator Evaluation. I too, along with the previous speakers, have the privilege of working on the EES Council, which revised the guidelines that are before me today. Over the course of my career, I've worn three hats. The first is that of classroom teacher. I wore that hat for 18 years and was evaluated under the current guidelines. I then moved into administration, where I put on my second hat, where I was in charge of implementing the evaluation guidelines that currently exist. I now am wearing my third hat, which is as an evaluation specialist at the Connecticut Education Association. With each of these three hats, I can attest that the current guidelines have, are overly compartmental and don't work well for teachers, for administrators, or for the students that they serve. The guidelines that we've found for two years surviving came before you as a result of collaboration between all the major educational stakeholders in Connecticut, the superintendent's organization, administrator's organization, the teachers and their unions. It's not often that you get all of these individuals into a room and have them agree that change is necessary and agree on steps forward to make those changes a reality, but that happened. And as Jennifer Benaventas spoke in her public comment, the process of achieving these new guidelines is truly a model for the boards, their administrators, and their teachers and our locals, and also a model for the rest of the country. So it's been truly a privilege to be part of that process and feel that our efforts have led to improvement. One of the major problems with the existing guidelines is they were so convoluted that it led to a large amount of distrust that wasn't necessary. And I think the great work in revising the guidelines, these stakeholders coming together in that process brings about a greater feeling of trust, which again is something that we hope our local EDX will see in M&amp;A. The other thing that will foster trust is that the leader evaluation plan and the teacher evaluation plan are aligned, so the expectation is to know, and that will go a long way to fostering that trust that's truly necessary for transforming teaching and learning. So thank you for your time and attention this morning and for all that you do have to have us do in Connecticut. Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Tom Mulankey. I am the vice president of the Connecticut Education Association. I also am a great teacher from Darien, Connecticut. I do here to speak on behalf of the work of the EES Council and support of adopting the new teacher evaluation standard. I first want to thank the council for bringing together a group of stakeholders who did not necessarily see things the same way in terms of making changes to the guidelines for teacher evaluation. We spent almost two years working together, learning together, growing together, with the idea that if we create a model for teacher and administrator evaluation that is truly a growth model, that while we help grow our educators as both deliver the content and practices of pedagogy, that we can truly help lead our students to succeed. Another one question many people have about the new guidelines is about accountability and the removal of ratings. I want to assure you that we thought about this tremendously. A rating doesn't necessarily make a good or bad teacher or lead them to do better with their students. What does that is a quality conversation with critical feedback and support and resources that helps lead teachers to be the best version of who they are in the classroom and serve our students. This plan does that. Not only that, we do make sure that there is a path to support teachers through corrective systems and counseling, so there is a separate path through the guidelines that allows that, which is currently the same path we have now. I urge you to adopt these guidelines. It's critical to improving Connecticut Public Schools and the work that our teachers do to support students. And I hope our administrators are equal to have a path of manageable efficiency and give them guidelines of clear feedback that helps grow teachers. Again, this group worked tremendously together. I have to thank all of the stakeholders who really helped me write the professional student work. It was an honor and a compliment to be on the council and to support the over 40,000 teachers that we represent. So thank you. I really hope that you consider adopting the guidelines and enable forward to the work that we can do to teach Connecticut Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Turn off the turntable.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Time to turn off the Manchester Street visitor. I just want to note to you history and some other facts here on education. I know you have that African-American history course about slavery, and I think I want to bring in maybe one book that fell apart in the political paperwork property. It's a book that came out four years ago by Stephanie L. Jones Rogers about white female slave owners during that 19th century, and they'd be fifth comedians or husbands. And it really did document a two mistreatment of slaves and, you know, I guess, of commerce commodities. So that's another thing. It's the anniversary of the anniversary of the manifestation of Prophetic Nation and Teddy's Burg, and what just came out recently is American History, most recent one is summer edition with Abraham Lincoln, rough draft of that during his presidency before he was assassinated, and Civil War Times with Colonel Joshua Chamberlain from Maine, I guess he said today from around top in July of 1863, second day, third day, then Fall of Pittsburgh. So that was on the Fourth of July, about that. Sixty-year anniversary of Manchester Community College, where I attended as a student for my first few years before I transferred to undergrad graduate school. And Dr. William S. Castillo is a current CEO, or used to know him as our president there. So he wants to do some outreach to the community when I went to invent there last month. And last, the military naval battle, remembering our Coast Guard during World War II and other wars, and the most recent naval history that I think was about Battle of Halsey during that time, and the Bay, I guess going back to Gulf of the Philippines for a while in 1898. So very good. About education, we had invented the eighth, and I was really impressed by the two speakers. One took the reading course, because he was punctual and deliberate, and came a long way, another lady is a member of Trier, a refugee, and she's a stand-up immigrant naturalized citizen race reason. So that was very good. Someone to deal with racism and sexism, anti-racist shit, and one recommended a book that came out two years later, Tiffany Jew, last year. They deal with LPTQ issues, and we have to look at the whole person, because they didn't translate in other issues of civil rights of our time, and looking at, you know, their day parents out there, P flag organizations. So we can look at the whole list and part of it, and it's been violent against that community too. So the middle state balance, communities have a right to know, but also watch out for their own prejudices, whether you have children or not, and we're all together, especially at these perilous times in the United States, divided government. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And that concludes our public participation section. Before we move though to our end of year presentation, the chair is going to use her authority one more time to make a switch here, just because there are a few things that I want to make sure I get in before I have to head to the airport, one of which is item 7B, if you would go with me to item 7B. This is the time of year, as we know, last month, we did farewell to one of our student members, and graduation schedules retard us to do that a month early. But today, we want to have a moment to pay tribute to our student member, Vallee Pendiella, who's been with us, serving a very impactful role on our Connected State Board of Education as a student board member, also taking leadership role and accepting opportunities to work with NASTI and contributing their voice at that level as well, so its national impact. You'll recall, was it last month or two months ago, Vallee had an opportunity to present the culmination of some work that they've been working on, the board gave us our charge to move forward in terms of work that we can continue to do to ensure that our health curriculum is appropriately supporting and educating our LGBT students. So in so many ways, Vallee has been a contributing member of this state board, and we are all very excited to see and watch your journey to continue and become the attorney that we all know that you're going to be after your undergrad, after your summer intern in a law office, your undergraduate degree will anticipate very much more. So I would love to entertain a motion on the item I'm about to read to you, which says, whereas Section 10-1 of the Connecticut General Statute provides for the appointment of two student members of the Connected State Board of Education, and whereas Governor Dan Lamont appointed Vallee Pendiella of South Windsor to the State Board of Education for a one-year term commencing July 7, 2022, and whereas during their term, Ms. Pendiella served with distinction and has contributed greatly to the board's discussions of education policy issues, now therefore be resolved that the State Board of Education extends to Vallee its appreciation for their commitment to educational excellence and equity in Connecticut Public Schools, and best wishes for success in your future endeavors. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Second.
It has been moved improperly seconded. Board members, are there any comments that you'd like to make before I call the vote?
I'll comment that it's always been such a pleasure to have worked beside you, literally next to me, for the past year, and I appreciate the very best. I'm always, I was in awe, I said, of Akasha, and when watching your confirmation hearings, you followed that group, and you certainly contributed greatly to us. There's nothing more important than human community and student voice. So thank you very much, your service.
Thank you.
May I, as well, in my voice, as every we said, it's that student voice is so critically important to us, and having your voice around this table is really been important. So thank you for all you've done, and I agree, we will watch to see where you go. I find you right.
And just wishing you nothing but the best as you continue your journey. I'm sure you're going to become an outstanding attorney.
Absolutely.
I think you've been the epitome of what a student board member should be, and you've always been an example to others in the serving of all.
Thank you so much. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, unanimous approval to this resolution. Laddie, please join us. We'd love to get up. Photo with you.
Connecticut. You didn't know that. That was part of the requirement you have to be turned.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Right to you. I will read you to the record the communication that we received from Vallee, and if you have anything you'd like to say. "Unto my fellow members of the Connecticut State Board of Education, this past year has been one of the best experiences of my life. I've learned so much more about education in our state, but I've also learned more about being a leader and the power of my voice. I could not have gone on this journey without the help and support of each and every one of you, and for that, I am forever grateful. sincerely, Vallee." Thank you so much.
I mean, like I said, it's my call. It's truly been an honor, and I hope my successor gets to have the same opportunities and also experience and benefit that I have had to whoever that successor is over in the world.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Absolutely. You all definitely play the path for others to follow, so thank you for that. All right. So let us continue with the theme of human voice and turn back to public participation on two. This is a wonderful part of the year when we get to hear the end of your presentations from our state student advisory council on education. I know every year I look forward to this opportunity, and I know that I have that as shared by other board members. We got a little sneak introduction to them during earlier meetings, so I'm excited to have them come and join us. So at this point, I'll turn it over. You can come to the, however many of you are in the meeting, you can come to this table. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will, uh, read you to the record, um, the communication that we received from Valley. And if you have anything you'd like to say. I'm to my fellow members of Connecticut State Board of Education, this past year has been one of the best experiences of my life. I've learned so much more about education in our state, but I've also learned more about being a leader and the power of my voice. I could not have gone on this journey without the help and support of each and every one of you. And for that, I am forever grateful. To hear you that. Thank you so much.
I mean, like I said, it's my fault. It's true, it's been an honor and I hope, um, my successor gets to have the same opportunities and also experience and benefit that I have. And to whoever that successor is, I wish him all the best.
Thank you, thank you, absolutely. You all definitely play the path for, for others to follow. So thank you for that. All right, so let us continue with the theme of student voice and turn back to public participation item two. Um, this is a wonderful part of the year when we get to hear, uh, the end of your presentations from our state student advisory council on education. I know every year I look forward to this, um, opportunity. And I know that I got this chair by the other board member. Um, we got a little sneak, um, introduction to them during, during earlier meeting. Um, so I'm excited to have them, have them come and join us. So at this point, I'll turn it over. Um, you can come to the, however, the year, the week, the presentation, you definitely come to this right table.
Hello, everybody. So we are the first task group, um, with the state, or state student advisory council on education. And so our task is basically kind of looking into school attendance and improving school climate and student success through the attendance task. And just to introduce myself, my name is Molenda Lu and I'm from Amory Regional High School.
Hi, I'm Verdana Law and I'm from Danielle Hand High School.
Hi, I'm Jay Blackwood and I'm from New Burton High.
Hello, I'm Melissa Nathan and I'm from Norris County Academy.
Hi, my name is Daniel Marrow and I'm from the Academy of Science Innovation.
And you can run the next slide.
So, um, with the effects of COVID were really great on Connecticut. So before the pandemic, about eight million students were chronically absent. And after COVID in the years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, um, it reached double and the, it still remains high. It was worse, as you can see, uh, in the top graph, it was worse for kids with more remote learning. And it is also high for all groups, as seen by the diagram. It is worse for kids with high needs, but for all groups, it, the numbers were made high. Uh, there's a lot of mixed messages after COVID that were leading to this, such as when you go to school, who to contact, when to make a sit. And confusion about school policies. Um, the reason why absenteeism is so important is because if you are chronically absent in kindergarten, it can affect your ability to read on a third grade level. And which leads to like forms of middle school, which then leads to higher dropout rates in high school. So it really doesn't affect you for your whole life. You can use an encyclopedia.
Okay, well, you could have signed this, this survey. We last got over three hundred responsible on the student survey about, like, about chronic absenteeism. And I think a little survey mentioned rather way for the students actually will the con, the chronic absenteeism, especially after COVID. So they said that for factories with parent engagement, extracurricular activities, student teacher relationships. Next slide.
All right, these are the results from the survey that we took. But the summer actually very briefly, students reported that the easiest way for schools to contact their parents or guardians was by phone. Yeah, only thirty-seven percent are likely to let somebody date today. They just need to remember miscommunication and misinterpretation. Moving on to the next, to charts, uh, student survey, eighty-four point two percent participate in extracurricular activities. The biggest limitation of participating in extracurricular activities is transportation. Eighty percent had a good relationship with their teachers and a little over one-third say their teachers do not go out of their way to provide class time to build relationships with students, making students more inclined to go to school.
Any questions? Okay, so. Between parents and educators, also, um, teachers and students and all that. So the survey said that fifty-two percent fully understood the process of recording absences. And forty-seven fully understood the COVID slash sickness day at home policy. So honestly, I think what we need to do is increase that percentage tremendously. Um, so that everybody is fully aware of the expectation, um, for, for attending school. Um, some feedback from students was very valuable. Um, a few that we want to highlight is that, um, rewards for students with perfect attendance could be a great incentive to come to school. So things like, um, just to athletic facility, after school activity, social events, um, that sort of stuff. And then another thing is teaching kind of management skill. I know I definitely can help with that as a freedom. Um, so that would be another really great tool. Um, all these changes to school schedules, so shorter days in classes and flex periods or, um, what we have at our school, something called Wellness Wednesday. So thirty minutes every Wednesday to kind of decompress, talk with your teachers. Again, all these things really increase transparency, um, between, between, excuse me, um, students and teachers. And mostly providing resources for mental health and browse. I'm sure you guys have heard of senioritis and kind of losing that motivation towards the end of the year. So if something could be done for that, I think that would tremendously improve attendance.
Next slide, thanks. And so actually in the state board of education, we have a couple of policy recommendations. So especially in terms of professional development, we'd like to suggest that schools implement more tier ones of course or foundational of course. That basically means instead of waiting until it's in crisis mode or there's a certain percentage of students with chronic absenteeism. We start preventing chronic absenteeism before it even starts. So, uh, for us, our policy focuses mainly on high school students since that's where we draw our data from. And so as Rebecca said earlier, we like to have increased transparency and messaging with students, teachers and also the parents. And for the state board of education, we'd like them to have these advisory recommendations to schools about how they can display their qualities to make them more accessible to the public and also the students. And also in terms of chronic absenteeism letters to parents when students are chronically absent, we'd like there to be more positive wording. To actually encourage students to come to school instead of making it a punishment that they aren't. And lastly, we'd like to have more practices on home roots or building relationships that we talked about earlier. So for the state board of education, we'd like to kind of, instead of just using the two mental health days as a state recommendation, actually having more recommendations surrounding how schools can build mental health and also better resources for students. Um, as one of our suggestions. And so as for our attendance, uh, group, we like to thank you so much for your time and we'll be moving on to the next topic.
Hi, everyone. We are the second task and our topic was encompassing engaging curricula. My name is Ben Margolis and Rock Hill High School.
Hi, I'm Ron McKinnon from Weatherfield High School.
My name is Jeanne Gooden and I'm from Amory Regional High School.
My name's, my name's Karen Elliott and I'm from Tolda High School.
My name is Andrew S. Lewis and we're seeing success.
I'm Jim Dronin, I'm from Power Base.
Next slide, please.
Um, so to introduce our, the problems in most schools with attendance. Um, so seventeen point six percent of Connecticut students were chronically absent as of twenty twenty-two, which, um, that's only twenty percent. And according to, as I conducted by Yale, sixty percent of high school students feel negative emotions toward school. Um, which can include things like senioritis. Um, so students who, students want more opportunities to learn about culture and they just, they want more opportunities to learn about certain things. Um, that they feel would connect them more to the schools that, um, and would keep them in school. And so, um, eight thousand, nine thousand students out of forty-one thousand, um, receive intervention for the chronic absenteeism, which, um, that's only like twenty percent. Which is now even close to almost fifty percent. And so more healthy to speak on that. Next slide, please.
So really going off that, since that sixty-eight percent of students want more opportunities to learn about culture, um, we want them to first identify a problem with curricula and that students will find the curriculum more engaging if it's relatable. Um, when it comes to topics like cultures, students often have to go out of their way or take some other classes to learn about these topics because it's not implemented in those daily classes that you're taking. Um, so just to provide an example, a lot of the, you know, studies classes now offered across the state. And that's amazing, I found this so exciting when I heard about that. But the only problem is at a lot of schools, it doesn't run and students who dare cite others and need to learn about culture are most likely not forced to go out of their way to take a class about culture, let alone a year long class. Um, so it's really important that students are given an opportunity to learn about culture in a format that's not a optional year long course, especially because students are already overwhelmed with scheduling. And fitting that in can be very, it's also typical that we put it in classes that students are taking no matter what. Um, so continuing to offer these courses is amazing, um, but implementing small cultural segments and courses that are mandated is what we. So perhaps there's a segment is about, you know, Middle East, your culture, um, or in that, that's really a small cultural segment about the geography of the areas, faces of the culture. Even just for five minutes can really take things to the next level for cultural education. And also it's really important that when we talk about countries outside of Europe in a world fiction class, it's not always in the context of common days, it's not, it's not that important what you may, so.
A proven model for, uh, increasing, uh, or rather decreasing chronic absenteeism was the Hartford Student Internship Program. In which, uh, students were able to go and do an internship and learn actually about things that they thought were applicable to their life or things that they just wanted to learn about. Um, a quote from Michael Maggiars, sorry, Maggiars, then principal of the Academy of Engineering and Green Technology was, our kids who do internships send up straighter, their workforce is in the classroom. So, I mean, this has been proven that doing an internship increases productivity and decreases chronic absenteeism. Next slide, please.
So a huge problem we saw with like engagement with students is something I like to refer to as TikTok attention span. And as we have this new influx of short form content in form of YouTube Shorts, Instagram Reels and of course TikTok, which is one of the most popular apps, not only within students, but with everyone. Um, we can see the declining of attention spans in students and their ability to pay attention during the long lectures and classes. And we see like a huge problem and we, I would find a solution for that.
I like to refer to it as a TikToking time bomb, the problem of short attention spans. You know, TikToks are usually like, you know, fifteen seconds to a minute, reasonably just frustrated to maybe three minutes max for a TikTok video. Not like, and then going to school and having your, uh, class be like an hour, that's just, you know, that doesn't help. If, if, like, if you, um, you know, use some three minute videos, um, going for an hour, it just doesn't work, you know. Um, you see, I'm realizing this is a little, little bit of alliteration, it's a lengthy lecture, we do less learning. But, um, you know, you go to school ready to learn, even if you're not so engaged in the subject, you're like, okay, we're going to do this. And then it gets like twenty minutes in and you're like, okay, when is this done? You know, you just start talking, you're taking notes and you get, you know, like, that's not good for anybody. If you're more engaged in like the topic and like the teacher asks, even just something asking questions that you're just drawing on, that, you know, just teach you on your toes and you know you might have to answer questions. If you're not going to zone out, you're going to have to pay attention to the, uh, material. I think that more hands-on learning is necessary, you know, maybe at some classes that doesn't necessarily work, but like science or experiments, I think definitely is something, you know. Well, science is a big struggle for many kids and I think, you know, if you do more experiments, people are excited, you know, they come to school on the experiment desk, which is what I've noticed at least. You know, and like, that's something kids definitely want to get, uh, involved in. Next slide, please.
Going along with the hands-on learning, another example of hands-on learning and also getting out of traditional classroom are field trips. And there's evidence that field trips is not only more engaging, but improves their lives in the long term. Fifty-nine percent of field trips or students who go on field trips have better grades. Sixty-three percent have higher graduation rates in college and ninety-five percent have higher graduation rates in high school. And going really long term, twelve percent of students who go on field trips have higher annual incomes. So even though it may seem like a small feature happening in a moment, things like field trips and hands-on learning can have outcomes that go on through the rest of students' lives. Next slide, please. Thank you for listening and we hope you take our recommendations into account.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, and I, uh, certainly allow other board members to comment as well. I want to, um, thank each and every one who contributed their time over the, the years to pull this together and your time with us today. Um, and also acknowledge, um, your, the advisor, Sharice Miller Odokwe. Thank you so much for the time that you've spent, um, supporting these young people as well. Um, attendance is something that we have been talking about a lot around this table. Um, and, um, have heard lots of perspectives around this, around this table. But I, I feel that student voice was, was missing from a lot of the conversations we've had around school attendance. Um, and so this is, this is, uh, very timely and important focus that you're bringing in. And certainly give us something to think about and move forward with. Um, uh, board members, questions, kind of? I think I have one question and it was, um, the first, um, the curriculum. There was a, a solution, a very last solution to continue to this, offer this course, but, oh no, sorry, I read it wrong, but, sorry. It was the one that you suggested, homeroom period. Could you elaborate a little bit more about that? So I know our schools recently have taken away homeroom period, isn't that the case?
Uh, yeah, so our emphasis on homeroom period was mainly instead of just purely having homeroom as just like staying in the classroom for a certain period of time in the morning. We suggest more engaged learning. So for example, at my school, we do something called seminar. And what's more effective is not just having kids in a room with another adult, it's more having like activities for these kids to do. And something that allows them to step away from school and be able to either learn practical skills. So this year we focused on like personal finance in those settings or either building relationship skills. So that could be more social skills or more social activities that students could engage in, in advisory style or seminar like classes. Instead of just purely having students in a classroom with another adult.
So this is like in addition to advisory or in lieu of like for those schools that maybe don't have advisory to do this in the homeroom period, to extend the homeroom period? Yes. Oh, interesting, interesting. Thank you. Yes.
So, um, you, you know, on the first survey page, we asked students to rate their attendance. Can you just give me like what you meant by rate and have a number somewhere? Like, did you provide a guideline?
Maybe just hang up Google back up. Or a ID number.
Um, so they did a survey survey to a five versus like, I have great attendance, um, I go to school all the time, every day. Um, not necessarily perfect, but, you know, maybe only here and there. And then number one was chronic absenteeism, not often at school.
Uh, so thank you. I just want to, uh, add my voice to the thank you for the great presentations that you made on two topics, as we talked about, that is so very important to us, attendance and its connection. Right, having engaging curriculum to be there. Uh, for, some of you may know that I last week spoke at a congressional hearing on mental health. And the surgeon general released a report on the epidemic of loneliness. Uh, and really as a, this major issue that's now in practice, not just for young people, but the elderly as well, and the need for social connection. And so what I hear you're, you're, you're talking about, even with the explanation just now, is the need for you all to get together as peers, right? And, and to be able to support each other in this space as well. And so I appreciate, uh, the solutions, uh, that you're sharing. And also it is a topic of great importance to us and so we will make sure internally. of great importance to us and so we will make sure internally that our focus in our academic office to see your presentations, a, a long results for working on attendance and tiers of support to provide. So thank you for continuing to share that with us. We're always open to find out how can we make sure we're engaged in school. It's just about TikTok, it's just about the attention span and what needs to happen in that space. I think for all of us that do an education policy, it's worth us thinking about the industry of that and technology and what that looks like for us and AI and everything else that's coming along the way. But I just really wanted to thank you for sharing your thoughts with us and know that it is appreciated and will be utilized. And Sharice, thank you so much as always for your work with this group.
Wonderful, thank you all. And to those of you that are graduating senior, uh, we wish you the best, um, in your, in your next endeavor. All righty. Um, we do not have any items for executive session today. Um, so we'll move to item four A, which is, uh, approval of the minutes from the May third, twenty twenty-three State Board Education Meeting. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
The move is properly seconded. Are there any edits noted? Corrections? Addition or deletion? See none, all of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries, the minutes have been adopted. Um, I worked my report in already, including my quotes, just in case I ran out of time. So something there for the recorder to share. This is, because it's non-honors and, uh, and probably Eric and Alan are the only others to know, but just a quick update on Killenly. Um, we did hear somebody, the Attorney General, um, that the department has, um, requested the hearing to be, put a hold on pending, the pending hearing, um, and that they have engaged in a contract with the community health resources. And so, um, right now that's sort of rooted in the holding pattern to see what occurs in Killenly. Um, and we then, of course, in our message from here, and I'm assuming that the two of you received as well, to hold off pending motions until they're noticed. So I just wanted to make sure the rest of the board understood, um, that the department, I guess, is going to ask for a hold, um, on the hearing as we see the outcome of the community service being executed in Killenly. I don't want to bring them up to bay.
I ask, what do you mean by hearing? What's a hearing?
We were engaged for quite some time now, um, since we voted to go to hear, hear the case on Killenly. Um, Mrs. Taylor, um, Spun and myself are on, um, the hearing panel to hear the case and it's been postponed, postponed by Killenly. Um, and now they have engaged a contract with, um, the community health resources, is that they have, as of May first, they have engaged into a contract with them for the upcoming school year.
What is a hearing? The hearing was because they were not holding, the claim was, the issue was whether they were fulfilling their responsibility and obligation to provide Right. healthcare for their students. Right. And they, what they've done, instead of going to a hearing and having duplication, is they hired somebody to provide healthcare, so everything.
Well, at the hearing, are you going to evaluate or consider that, it's possible to, to hire that organi- that organization?
No, that's, yeah, right now there is no hearing because they have hired this, this agency. Um, so, but we're sort of waiting to see how, if the agency indeed is put into Killenly and so we're not dismissing, um, the hearing or if that's.
So it may be helpful for, for our
Yeah, maybe my.
Uh, if you should, uh, maybe take the microphone and end it briefly, clarify where we are with this problem. I know the void I just felt in the attorney and the department, right?
It's a little.
Cheer with us where we are from the department side.
Thank you, uh, morning. Yes, uh, as you called, there was a vote by the board to retort this to a hearing to determine whether in fact, uh, was borne down to reasonable cause to, to have a hearing to determine whether Killenly was failing to implement the case origins of the state. Uh, subsequent to that, a number of motions were filed, uh, primarily by Killenly, which somewhat delayed the process. Uh, at the same time, Killenly, uh, was looking at the possibility of entering into an agreement with a, a, uh, healthcare provider, with respect to healthcare, and it's limited to a, uh, emotional, mental health services. Uh, after what appears to have been a couple of failed attempts, they have now apparently entered into a contract with, with a provider, which is supposed to take effect, um, at the beginning of next school year. Um, and my, our understanding is they'll be ramping up during the summer and the services will commence with events of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Given that, uh, it was determined that it would probably make the most practical sense to stay proceeding until such time as we saw whether in fact Killenly was following through. We have not, the question that the hearing dismissed, uh, seeing and believing, and therefore we wish to, to have that, while hell and a bag for right now, nonetheless, we still want to go forward, it turned out that Killenly is not fulfilling, but the state partner is chasing, believes it's, um, obligation to, uh, fulfill the education origins of the state. So that's where we are right now. Uh, the attorney for the complaint, the individual's filed the original ten-four B complaint, they have also filed a motion seeking to intervene in the case, that's one of the motions pending as well. Nonetheless, uh, they, uh, their counsel, uh, is of the mind, as the state partner is chasing, that it would make sense to hold off until such time as we determine whether Killenly will do the right thing. Do the right thing is coming from me, uh, as the state partner is chasing.
That legal term.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I have a question about whether hiring that contractor is doing the right thing. I mean, is the board going to approve, vote on approving their solution to this issue?
That's not at this point now, right? So the, the local board is taking action. Uh, if there's further, the vote from this board will be behind the hearing. So we, we will never be in the business of, of approving their, their contract with that center.
I, if I may clarify a little bit, if you don't mind, uh, one of the things that the state department, when, when I conducted the investigation on behalf of the department and issued a report, I tried to stress that the failure to enter into an agreement with a school-based health center is not the end-all and be-all, rather exemplifies the fact that Killenly is specifically doing nothing, in our opinion. Um, this seems to be a step in rectifying that and trying to provide for the, for what we felt to be a clear need, emotional and behavioral mental health need of students. So therefore, I don't believe the state department would be pushing that you need to do X, it's more you need to do something. And this appears, uh, again, we want to make sure that they follow through and that it's appropriate, that this is a step in the, the right direction that would rectify their prior failure to, to again, address the needs of the students. Uh, the state department is never pushing for them needing to do a school-based health center, they just felt that that was one possible solution.
Nice, thank you, I should thank John briefly next, but to join you at the table, because since Killenly has also become a part of our behavioral health pilot, and if you can just, we just share that as well, and again, we're not going into the situation of case, but from the department's perspective, just to let you know the other things that we monitor and watch as well. So behavioral health pilot?
So thank you, Commissioner. So, um, Killenly is probably the behavioral pilot, they received, uh, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars as part of that pilot work. They were also awarded one of the mental health workers grants that we announced, uh, earlier this year. So they were in the process of hiring a director of mental health wellness and family engagement that we've been working on and with. So they're, they're recorded, regardless of those, um, those other profit funding and those other grants that they're awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if this is appropriate time to, to bring this up, but I have a couple of problems with that, you know, so, so, and they've been hiring that, that contract that, but one of the things is that the parents would be involved in knowing what's, what's going on with the students and in some cases the parents are the problem. And, uh, the other thing is that private insurance is, uh, supposed to cover this and some families don't have health insurance and even if they do, the health insurance company might not, uh, cover it. So those are my concerns that I hope are considered in, down the line.
Well, I think what is the best outcome that we hope to see is that this, this service, um, this resource that Killenly is gonna put in for the next school, they probably will put in for the next school year, and now hearing, uh, the pilot that they're involved in, um, that the department will feel that Killenly is doing an investment just of their students, and that is what we're hoping. That is why the case was not just dropped and it's sort of in a steady, um, that if we hear otherwise, I would assume we would be guided by the general consensus to resume what we were doing for the last
All right.
few months, motion after motion going on and on and on, uh, never actually having a hearing because of all the motions.
Is it part of it or someone from the board monitoring what's going, like, is there someone involved in that process? Like, the specific process of contacting with, like, is, is someone making sure that, that health center is sufficient to meet the need, or did that the hearing process itself?
Uh, I, I can tell you that I have, um, relayed in contact with the attorney for the complaint, who, who has obviously, having represented the concerned citizens of residence of Killenly, uh, has resources in Killenly. Uh, that's one of the means by which we are monitoring the process. Um, I think, you know, once the, the, um, school year starts and both this, this program that they've entered into a contract for, and also the, uh, resources that, that John spoke about, uh, are really kicking for, uh, board to, to action, that would be something I think the department would be more directly involved in monitoring. Um, because, you know, if, if they fail to follow through, then the department will assist, then we go forward with a hearing as promptly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
So, Gary, you did this, so.
Are you going to say, or is it a tough day? Okay, um, we are going to move to item, uh, six, reported to the Attorney Agency. Okay. Thank you very much. Actually, in fact, before we move to that, I just wanted, I was, you're in it, but, um, I just wanted to make it out because I am going to have the lead. Um, but I, I, um, in Malia's absence, um, I chaired the Legislation and Policy Development, um, committee this morning, and I, I just actually want to give, give that report because it is going to tie into an actual item that I may, I may overlook by then. Uh, so the committee did, did lead this morning, um, for the purpose of reviewing the, um, item, uh, seven G on your, on your agenda, the Connecticut Guidelines for Education and New York Evaluation and Support for twenty twenty-three. Um, and as you heard from public comments, a lot of support for that, we had a wonderful presentation by Dr. Tucker, Shana Tucker, and, um, Ms., Dr. Sharon Fuller? Ms., Ms. Sharon Fuller, um, to the, to the committee, um, which laid out the very comprehensive process that they had gone through, um, lots of stakeholder involvement, um, and many ways in which the new guidelines, um, are, um, addressing any shortcomings or failures of the, of the fifteen fiscal, um, and highly recommended, and the committee did, um, advance that with our, with our commendation to the full board for consideration. So I just wanted to make sure that that was reported out, um, prior to getting to that item. Now, Commissioner, could you hear a report? Thank you very much, uh, and good morning again, Chair Swobosin, Vice Chair Bennett, and all the board members. Happy June, it's here already, and it's amazing to think about the winding down of another school year, but it has actually happened, here we are. You have my report and your supplement in, in your packet, uh, I will highlight two key topics and then we'll transition to our, our agency update. Uh, first, very pleased to have our Deputy Commissioner, Cynthia Sulli, you have the president in the room, right? And great to have her on board, and pleased to inform you that since mid-April, we've hired, we have had ten new hires
Oh.
uh, to our ranks, uh, nine of them again, we are moving, we are moving and three in the queue to move forward. And, uh, the next time we get together, I'll have the entire list of what, how, what we've accomplished, so we're really pleased, and trust me, the staff that's doing the work, they're really feeling, uh, really, uh, excited about the added capacity, so really excited about that. On my, in my report you see, and I'd say, it just continues to be a focus, and you will hear more about that in your agency update, uh, as, as well as impact on that as well. Uh, many visits happened, but I wanted to highlight the visit to East Park first, they had a in-Norris School, uh, was joined by Lieutenant Governor, and the purpose we were there was to launch our second annual pre-K twelve school staff appreciation digital backpack of digital. And this is providing promotions and discounts as a thank you to all school staff across the state. Last year we launched this for the very first time in August and September, and we got, uh, discounts and promotions to restaurants and bookstores and state park entry, and we do it again this year as a thank you to all of our staff across the state. Uh, so if you please spread the word, and if you have businesses that you know would like to contribute, just let Eric know, it's really a way of saying thank you, uh, at the end of the school year to all of school staff across our, our, our school system here, it's whether you're in a classroom, in the cafeteria, if, if you're driving the bus, uh, whatever it is, you know, they're, they're so supportive on you, that's just a way of saying thank you. So I wanted you to know that that is happening. We had a press conference on the recent educator shortage that was incorporated in, in Dr. Tucker's presentation to you to give you some additional information. I had the opportunity to present at the National Governors Association, uh, Governors' Education Policy Advisers K Trump Summit. Uh, I was invited to talk about all the work that we're doing in Connecticut around literacy, uh, around attendance, I talked about that, and we should so very well receive that. Oh, by the way, our YouTube video, I'll know about our YouTube video, it's not, it's over a million views, uh, you should know that, and the video that was done by the Collaborative for School Success just won Silver and Bronze Telly Award, uh, and apparently this award is presented, uh, to, they have over twelve hundred entries from all fifty states and five continents, uh, and they look at videos, uh, and screens that's been produced, so this was a highly prestigious award that was received. But more than anything else, really is getting information out about how we can assist students in getting back in the classroom. And this has been, I think we now have interest from Canada, uh, around it, and so our staff are keeping very busy in sharing information, but not taking our eyes off the ball about impact here right at home, and so continuing to make sure that that information is, is shared. And as you know, I mentioned, I was honored to be invited to testify at the U.S. Senate Health Education Labor and Pensions or Health Committee on why are so many American youth in mental health crisis, exploring causes and pollution. And I know the link was sent out to you, uh, I know you've probably not yet read the sixteen-page testimony, uh, that wrote, but really, really, it was just a combination of what Connecticut is doing together to address this issue of for youth mental health crisis, and the sixteen pages really represent this board's efforts, our policymakers, our other state agencies, the Department of Children and Families, which is our children's behavioral health agency, the efforts together with DTH and the Office of Workforce Strategies about a pipeline for hiring more behavioral health professionals in our state, uh, and our DSS as our Medicaid agency, and how we can look at using Medicaid funding to sustain the work that's happening, and so I encourage you to review it. But I really pause, as I was preparing with the team here, and thank you to the team who supported that work, in thinking about this board's twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, Equity and Excellence for All. We were talking about equity being critical in twenty sixteen, and we were driven by the things that were happening around it. And in that plan, this board, uh, in twenty sixteen had made four promises to our students, and one of them focused on ensuring that their non-academic needs are met, so that they're healthy, happy, and ready to learn. Twenty sixteen, physical and mental wellness was addressed by this board's plan, which really was pivotal to the work, uh, that we've been doing, and so, with the pandemic hit, we had a structural, infrastructure in, in place on which to build in order to move forward. So I wanted you to reflect, um, the board's twenty sixteen plan, and I know we're getting ready to do a new one, uh, but just to recognize the proactive and proactivity a new one, but just to recognize the proactive and proactivity and inspired action of that plan that I continue to refer to and focus on the country take a look at. And I'll just read to you page sixteen of the third quarter, the final clause. Finally, none of the practices and initiatives that I bring from our great state would be possible without the leadership of our governor, our sister agencies, the excellent staff at the CSDE, our statewide education, our school district superintendent, administrators, educators, and staff, our policymakers, and the many education partners in our state, and that truly is the Connecticut difference. We are working together on real solutions to support our 513,000, 513 students in our state. It is reason so important. That is all when we talk about it all, and that is so very important. So I just really want to thank you for what you've done in your leadership over the years, and the leadership continued. Finally, our long-standing session, as the board mentioned, ended last Wednesday night. Laura probably slept for a day and a half. And now we're working intensively to really assess everything that we now need to do in our districts as well, and we'll be reporting that out to you. But a shout out to our staff, because I testified in so many bills, and it may seem easy to sit and just testify in those bills, but those were hours and hours, and weekends and nights and weekends, of staff reviewing all the proposals and having all of us be able to sit together and figure out what are those things that we need to support, what are those things that we need to recommend changes on, and the constant advocacy that has occurred, Laura and team, just thank you all very much. We will be bringing to you what survived, you know, what made it, and we are moving forward. But I just want you to know the efforts and the work that happened through the last night of session, and and really appreciate the legislators who reached out to us. I got phone calls with questions about what is the impact of X, Y, and Z, and that really is where we are today. So I just want to thank the staff, a shout out to them for all the efforts, and now we're starting to make implementation and what that all will look like. So I'm going to transition now to agency reports. I'll answer questions. Anything else that I said? All right. And are we going to lose you?
Yes. Thanks, your benefits are going to take over.
Perfect, thank you. So agency reports, it won't be an entity, but we wanted to start off with our EXO investments on our next slide. As a reminder, there's a lot of conversation about, and you have the packet in your, in your folders here as well, reminding everyone of the EXO investments that we have. Then Shawna will talk about teacher shortages, she's some insight updates, and you know, my email chat box at the end, so that's what we do. Next slide, Kathy was unfortunately not be able to join us today, but I want to remind us, next slide, of the EXO funding that we received. I have a picture. The resources that we have, the $1.7 billion of EXO funding that came into our state, EXO One, EXO Two, an art EXO, and a reminder that 10% was state-level funding that we we kept here, 90% of that went out to our districts. And then the next slide, we wanted to remind you that in Connecticut, we've had, with all the resources that came in, EXO resources, that we've had investment priorities for which our state, our district actually developed plans for how the resources would be spent. And those are the priorities that we had for investing these resources, and the accounts that total funding committed by our districts for this work. We often talk about the $183 million towards social motion mental health supports for students and for staff. So everything that they're planning to do, or they were planning to do with these resources, had to have been submitted to us in a plan that was approved. On the next slide, you'll see where we are for the funding, the downloads, I would say, jar downloads of those funds. And for EXO Two, you will see that as of May, 75% of those resources were drawn down with a little bit, about 25% less. Funds are available through 9/30/23, so at this end is EXO Two, even though the federal government is now allowing some some levels of extension for liquidation of those funds. But I do want you to know that because the funds may not be drawn down, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not being utilized at the local level. There's sometimes a timing factor, forgetting that to us, but just wanting you to know where we are on that. And on the next slide, or the art EXO funds, again, you'll see the the amount that's drawn down in that space of, not as much, because they still have to turn, transform for utilization of those funds. However, the plan, and that's what I want to reiterate, the plan for for how those funds will be utilized was already done, approved, and continues to be monitored by the agencies. All right, the next update we wanted to provide, Shawna can join us to talk about our statewide initiatives on teacher shortages.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, board members. Many of you were with us during the recent press conference that we had here regarding the $3 million allocation of funds to address teacher shortage in here in Connecticut. So in partnership with the Department of Labor, we will be hosting on June 28th a statewide Power Educator Fair at Albatas Valley Community College from 5 to 7. So we have a registration link, because we need to collect information from all of our registrants. We already have nineteen districts that have signed up to come and recruit at this event, and we will have a program, including our Power Educator of the Year and others, who will share with our audience exactly what power educators, what districts are looking for, the various types of roles that power educators play. And as an aside, part two of the fair, because we don't just want to get people there and get them interested, part two of what we're working on is to expand. So the reason we're collecting data and information from them during the fair is we are seeking to then host Saturday Academy preparations for the Power Pro exam, and we have the funds to pay for the cost of the Power Pro exam. So we're trying to plan very quickly to get that done this summer with the goal of having a pool of applicants that successfully pass the Power Pro, so that districts may be able to hire parents. It's our first time doing this, but if all goes well, we'll tweak it a little bit. We are then looking to replicate this model throughout the next school year, so that we can really address this issue of power educators. Next slide. Next, we are also going to allocate funds to support our Educators Rising Grow Your Own program. You all met and heard from several of the students last month during the board meeting. We are in the process of developing a budget with mini-grants. We seek to expand our educators rising districts here within the state, so we will have grants to bring on new districts for the coming school year, as well as we're going to have expansion grants, because we really want to reward those districts that have done this for years, they've made a lot of progress, and we really would like to see them expand either to other high schools within their district, or to push down into the middle grade at middle school. I will say that we are really excited about this, and we've been working with, I believe, the CAFU, our partner, who hosts the Ed Rising program around the budget and what we can offer to our districts. And those grants will range anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000 for the coming school year. And I do want to give shout out to the day that last Thursday, I did have the opportunity of being in Britain for their Ed Rising signing day for the graduates and seniors, and they had thirteen graduates that day who were graduating, and they're all going on to the CCXU appunto to make their next page. So we are starting to now reach and see the benefit of what we've been working at for the past three years. So Grow Your Own is definitely a promising model for us as we try to address teacher shortage. I know it's long-term, but it's well worth the efforts that we're putting in.
So Shawna, the first one was on the apprenticeship program, and I know that we're, I might have skipped that, but I know there was interest around this table as well. And in your supplemental packet, I want to draw your attention to this one pager, which is Educated Recruitment by the Numbers. And again, this is all in response to the fact that we did a survey, we know that we do at shortages across the state. The education by the numbers is showing some of the impacts of what we're getting. As you know, under Dr. Tucker's leadership, we did the Northeast Enhanced Reciprocity Initiative that I know folks are still applying for. But as you can see on that one pager, that I think as a couple months ago, when we looked at the data, that we realized 478 new educators are coming into our state through the enhanced reciprocity process. Over 913 actually went through that process, and so we're looking to see how we can converge the range of educators who can now teach their state or prove to teach their state to actually do that as well. So the other thing is the apprenticeship program.
I might, I will answer this one. Yes, we also are then saying, part in developing a budget to work with our two apprenticeship programs, which helping here in Connecticut. We continue to work with the National Center for Grow Your Own. They are assisting us with a technical system to the grant that we received from the Buck Foundation, we identified our two districts. We will be working with Waterbury in Britain for starters, in Britain with the Connecticut Teacher Residency Program, Waterbury with the Next Gen Program. So we're now working with those districts and the center on the budget and the funds that we can use to supplement. I will say there is much interest. We just had our very first informational webinar yesterday on residencies, through a collaboration that we have with the National Center for Teacher Residencies, and that was very well received, because there's a lot of interest from our higher ed institutions and our EPP partners on establishing residency. And in fact, this morning, I received a text from someone regarding a university and a district that wants to collaborate and be a part of the apprenticeship model. So the way the model works is once we are able to get up and running, we want to apply for several funds, and those become available, and then we start the expansion process. But we have to start with just the two districts that we're currently in in partnership with and working with, and then once we have the clearance, we can then expand from there, those programs. So of course, we'll keep you updated on that.
Thank you. Question. Yes, can you explain how that apprenticeship program works? Does that mean that student teachers will be paid just in the way?
So the way that it works, we are looking at two models here in Connecticut, and we opted for two. One was the Connecticut Teacher Residency Model, UCRAC, which is already an established program that focuses on persons that are already working within districts in non-certified positions, and it will help them to become certified. And that is a year-long program where they will get paid, and you see their bill fit, but to be a part of the program. The second program that we adapted was our Next Gen Program, and our Next Gen Program started during the pandemic, and it was one of the programs to address teacher shortage. That program began as a partnership between Central Connecticut State University and Russell Public Schools, which started with twenty students. As early as sophomore years, they all had to be in an EPP program as majors, and they were working in the district for two and a half days per week with teachers, with students, and have an anchor teacher assigned to them, and they were paid such a two rate. So we are expanding that program and turning that into an apprenticeship model, and what we're going to do is equalize the pay for them. So once they start working in the various districts that will take on the apprenticeship model, it will be equalized and not a difference. We are also lobbying for a stipend for the anchor mentor teachers, because up until this point, they have done a scrotum, and we value it, it takes a lot of time and guidance and mentorship of what they're doing with working with our students. But it's kind of a grow, learn, and earn apprenticeship program, starting as early as freshman year, all the way through graduation, and then with employment. And there is a portion that we're looking at with a stipend for student teaching as well.
Thank you. And so as you can see, this is another area of collaboration across state agencies, so we're working with the Department of Labor in this state. So you have the one pager note that we also on this indicated the the impacts that we were seeing with all the efforts for educators of color. We're no longer at eight percent as we were back in 2015-16. This was also an initiative of this state board that we're up to 11.2% and climbing, and we're not resting. We know there's still a lot more work to be done, but really clear to the progress that's been made.
Commissioner, I'm going to show a few panels of discussion around the board. With the layoffs, like currently, you see a lot of layoffs occurring across the state in different districts. Do we have any kind of database that those perhaps being laid off at one district and are needed in another, that we can connect them? Do we do anything like that?
We don't have a centralized process in place, but I have gotten calls about that from other people who have shared that this district may be laying off X amount of teachers. So I have done a personal outreach to those superintendents to ask them, I understand that this may be the case. If so, can you please share with me some information? I would be happy to channel those teachers that are being laid off to other districts that still have many vacancies, and give them opportunities to hopefully be hired by another district.
My, one of those people that got my call was Dr. Tucker, who was going in basically saying, here's the, your three or four people, because I don't want to lose them to the profession. That's what it is, so we can help to to channel them to play to their own, their needs. I think that's that's the best outcome.
Yeah, because some of them, I heard that were special ed teachers, and I was like, oh. And now we have this one, I read that they need special ed teachers.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along expeditiously, Aggie will be joining us to show you some new products that we have on EdSite. I get excited about our EdSite data portal. Not with David, actually.
The next slide, actually. Thank you. Good morning. So EdSite, the team continues to crank out several new dashboards and reports. So we have launched at least four new dashboards on post-secondary readiness, which is our sort of enhanced accountability indicator, on-track high school graduation, that lets folks compare their on-track rates over time and across districts, and for all student groups, the arts access measure and accountability system, as well as a dashboard on students experiencing homelessness, which I will showcase in a moment. But I just did want to give a shout out to the entire unit. I just took a screenshot of our photo directory, and Dave, Danielle, Brianna, Stephanie, and John are the sort of architects behind much of what happens on that. And now we can switch Leslie. Thank you. And this is the dashboard on students experiencing homelessness that we launched recently. And what, you know, we, as we create these things, we're also learning how to communicate the data in a more helpful way for consumers. So one of the things that this dashboard does is actually give you statements of interpretation of what the data means. So you see sentences like, 3,984 students experienced homelessness in 2122, and it represents 0.8% of all students. We actually give you those statements, and those things will update dynamically every year. There's a map on the right, that's something we've learned, and if you could play, it'll actually, sorry, don't worry, it'll load up, and then we can write, don't worry. If you hit the play button once that map loads up, you'll actually see how the percentage of students experiencing homelessness changes over time in those different districts over a 10-year period. So, you know, and if we scroll down, further Leslie. And, you know, this dashboard of the state goes into further information about who are these students, what is their primary nighttime residence? You know, and and you see things like, you know, 2,500 were doubled up, and we give you an explanation of what doubles up means. You know, 811 lived in a hotel or motel, and what does that mean? What is sheltered and what is unsheltered? So we give you the data and the rates for each of those, each of those situations, and and these are, you know, these are part of the 513,000 students in our state who are actually experiencing, experiencing different types of homelessness. Further down, you see characteristics of students. You know, over 80% of our students experiencing homelessness are students of color, compared to 52% of all students. So it gives you again the data, but also how to interpret and make sense of that information, students with disabilities, English learners, et cetera. And then if you scroll further down, you'll see some performance information as well. And a lot of this information was on EdSite, but what a dashboard like this does is it brings it together and actually gives the interpretation for that data, which I think is is really helpful. So you see achievement information in terms of student performance, but then also graduation and other information is up there as well. I think you may have to reshare that.
Yeah.
In teams.
Yes, absolutely. And while we're reading for that, as you can see, a part of this for us is full transparency.
Just share the entire screen here. And now you can switch back to the slide deck.
Slide back.
The slide deck?
Yeah. No, not there, the other one. Nope, no, 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 don't. No, just go back to the PowerPoint on the bottom there. There you go. And then, uh, you should be able to go to the, yeah, the one on the right. Perfect.
Great.
And, uh, we've also added new data to the, to a couple of the dashboards. We just released our, our 2122 audited expenditure data, so that's part of the fiscal data, fiscal data reports. As well as the report, we have a resource allocation new dashboard, which allows you to compare expenditures across different schools, different districts, um, and it, and it kind of lays it out in visual ways. I mean, we could spend hours.
But thank you, thank you, Aggie. But we want you to know it's there. It is information that can be consumed online by all kinds of audiences, but it lets people know exactly where we are. So when we're making decisions, our decisions are data informed, and that's, uh, what we share, rather share across the state. But we are just really proud of the team here that does this. I can tell your head site data point is an envy of many states, and so we're constantly, uh, being able to proudly share it, but it's not a danger to the sake of data, but it's to inform our action. So thank you all very much. Uh, wait, if you go back to the deck, there, there are these pictures of shout outs, uh, that we just always want, want you to know. So there's a picture, uh, of, uh, the visit to, to, uh, the end in our schools. Uh, also to note that School Nurse Day in Connecticut, Governor Lamont declared May 10 for School Nurse Day to honor all or celebrate the incredible work of our school nurses that they do, uh, to keep our students healthy, safe, and ready to learn. Uh, so we share that with you. Uh, the factual challenge to which this board, you can keep moving forward, uh, the factual challenge that, uh, we work on as a collaborative with the Rise Network, uh, and we're continuing to try to, to push those numbers up. As you can see, we have two presidential scholars, uh, in Connecticut, uh, Greenwich High School and Greenwich and Wilson High School, Lucas and, and Luca, and we're really proud of their contributions as well. Uh, moving forward, uh, to the next slide. Yep, that's the challenge. That was me in the picture with the Black and Puerto Rican College Achievement Award, uh, that I very much appreciated receiving. Next is. Our, I met with the commissioners, the Connecticut Advice Council for Teacher Professional Standards. I know this board appoints those members and meeting with them to talk about certification and recruitment, uh, with the team sharing with there along with, uh, Dr. Tucker as well. And the others, I think we'll just, you can, uh, see those at your, this is a picture of the National Darkness Association, uh, meeting panel that I was a part of. I know staff have been engaged in other work as well, and you can take a look at those pictures. Uh, so thank you, everyone, and that is the end of our agency report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now we're going to move on to item 7A. We accomplished number one, we're on number two, which is the adoption of the 2024 meeting schedule. I just gave a motion on that.
So move.
Second. Any questions or concerns on any of the dates that were put before us? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, one thing I'd like to do is, because we're talking about the schedule, um, just to remind this, or ask about the retreats for this year for, um, the board members to know, we are scheduled to run on the second retreat. We know we don't have, um, the July meeting, but we are still scheduled in our old calendar for our 22nd retreat, and I guess we'll get some more information about that. And then, as we started last year too, and like for this department to be sure that, and it doesn't have to be October, but last October, we had an evening onsite meeting, which is part of our violence to do so, um, and if we could be aware of what meeting that would be, if it would be October, I realize when I look back, it's not designated. They're all designated being here for the rest of the year, um, but we do are required to have a onsite. And so remind you, good stuff. 7A3, approval of the State Board of Education committee appointment. If I could have a motion on that.
Move it.
There is, everything remains the same. We do have one addition, though. Um, Pat Matiz will be added to the Finance Audit and Budget Committee, and everybody else has, but we may stay the same. Uh, is there anything else, and just an add it?
Is Sarah still on committee?
My goodness, is she there?
She, I'm, oh, my goodness, she is.
I'm so sorry, that's the title.
I didn't hear she moved back to Connecticut.
I will send that to her, she will appreciate it.
So by the way, you put her on there, she can care.
So I'll move it with these, with this to track.
Yes, we moved with that correction. Is that the only one, is she under accountability?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
I apologize, I did pick off Robert Chuppi, I don't know how I missed that, but I do apologize.
All right. I think it's only fair that we not let it go.
I know, I think we just have a, we'll send it to the meeting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is 7C, the recognition of the Connecticut Association for Adult and Teen Education Student Award Winners. Could I have a motion on that?
Move.
Second. And Irene, well, I'll hand it over to you.
Good morning. Annually, we do recognize our adult learning state rights. So before it is a recognition, we recognize five individuals in adult learning programs for their accomplishments, and their accomplishments are listed. Um, I can read their names here if you wanted to, if I can.
You're going to be the one to recognize one of them.
Okay.
Yes.
So those being recognized here are Marina Carolla, Ellen Tedeschi, Nicole Taylor, Diana Maranda, and Brandon Ziminski. So again, we recommend that they be recognized, um, this year for their accomplishments.
Are any of them with us today?
No, they are not.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will mail another recognition and a copy of the resolution to them.
Okay, and you can stay where you are. The next item, 7D, the recognition of the GED Scholar Award winners. May I have a motion? Second. Irene?
Thank you. So once again, annually, we do recognize this accomplishment, and this is a recognition to the State Board of Education to recognize that Tavia Delsmith as a GED Scholar for 2022. She had earned a total score of 769 out of a possible 800, which has been the highest score attained in Connecticut during 2022.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Irene, you're still with us. Motion on approval of commission network turnaround plan, Barnum School, Ridgeport, and reminds us to accountability, this is the school that we heard from last, well, this month, earlier this month. Any motion?
I approve.
Second?
Second.
Irene?
Thank you so much. Yes, we are recommending to adopt and approve the Turner Flames of Barnum School and Ridgeport for the Commission Network. Just a little bit of background, um, as presented, it did appear to the Community and Support Committee on 7C for re-representation, and with me today is interim superintendent of Ridge Public Schools, Alicia Perrin, um, principal of Booth, from Barnum, as well as the one who recognized Mike. And upon your approval, they will begin to implement the actions listed.
Many board members have any questions for Irene, the principal, interim superintendent? All in favor of the plan?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Next item is 7A, consideration of North Street Academy's position for a declaratory ruling. And I believe Micah and Melissa and Chikasaka will be coming up. May I have a motion on that?
Good morning again. Uh, we're here today, uh, my colleague, Lee Pudicial, and I are here today on the, uh, petition for declaratory ruling that was filed by North Street Academy. Uh, Lou has, uh, been actively handling this matter, so I'm going to defer to him to explain it.
It's second you, boy, you're the one. Uh, you have a board report that lays out the analysis of the, uh, the department on this, on this matter. A declaratory of, of the, uh, the Administrative Procedure Act in Connecticut provides for the, uh, officials of the declaratory rulings by agencies as to the validity of regulations or to, or the adaptability to satisfy circumstances of statutes, regulations, or decisions of the agency. This is a petition by North Street Academy, which is an endowed and independent academy that provides secondary education to students' high school education, um, uh, including students in towns that do not themselves have high schools. Connecticut has two statutes, 10 at 33 and 10 at 34, which are quoted in the fourth report, which provide that if a town does not have, uh, a high school, it can designate a high school approved by the State Board of Education, which would be a public high school or a school such as North Street Academy, and students from that town can then attend that high school, and the town is required to pay the tuition of the students at that, uh, for attendance at the high school. Uh, North Street, in this case, we have a town of Basra, which does not take, does not, uh, have its own high school, which has designated North Street Academy and another, another school as a high school that the students may attend. The issue here as to whether, as to whether, uh, the town of Basra should be paying for three particular students that have attended North Street Academy, and there's a dispute apparently between Basra and North Street Academy as to the requirement for payment for these, these students. Uh, and the, the, uh, and, and North Street Academy has presented this to the State Board for Resolution, certainly the State Board has the jurisdiction to issue a ruling in the states. Uh, as you see from the report, though, it's recommended that the State Board decline to issue rulings in the state. Uh, whether, whether the state, whether the state agency generally will issue a declaratory ruling should depend on, and, and whether the agency has any special expertise as to a particular issue, uh, and as to whether these particular issues are appropriate for resolution by declaratory ruling process. Uh, here is a number of factual issues that probably have to be cited as a residency or other procedural requirements, whether they were met by, by the students who were seeking to attend. Uh, there is actually also a contract between NFA North Street Academy and town of Basra, which specifies various requirements for the attendance of students. So there may be contractual interpretation issues to decide, and it was the thinking of the, the legal office and the department thereafter, uh, that if these factual issues and contractual interpretation issues are not necessarily issues whereby the State Board has any special expertise. And in fact, there may be other venues, such as courts, uh, which would be better to resolve these issues. So that, that's the background really for the, the recommendation, the State Board to decline issue rulings in these cases. Um, either of us can gain any questions?
Well, let me, let me know, I think, I think it ties into Lou's, um, point with respect to the enforcement of contracts and the factual underpinnings of those, uh, of such contracts with dispute, is the fact that that first name contract between NFA and Basra provides a street resolution provision, which sets forth that if a party do have a dispute and they are unable to, uh, work it out with one another, that, uh, if either party then therefore wants to pursue that further, it's to be resolved in the Connecticut Superior Court. Um, so again, that ties into, to what, uh, search facts, specific situations, uh, these situations being related to individual students. And it really requires interpretation of the contract, uh, in the context of these individual circumstances. And, uh, again, perhaps anticipating that the party did previously, uh, agree during our in-place negotiation that any such dispute would be resolved in the Superior Court.
So my, that's really based, the bottom line relates to the dispute over these three students does not really belong at this table, it's the Superior Court is the one that should be issuing that ruling.
I, I think that's, would, would you agree?
Yes, that was our thinking expressed in the, in the board report. These issues again, just as well be, um, resolved by the State Board, in some respects, perhaps better resolved by the Superior Court. Uh, I, I will notice, we tried to evaluate the issues on their merits, uh, and did not simply because there is contractual dispute resolution procedure that involves Superior Court. It's not, I, we didn't take the issue, okay, well, they've already decided that, let's just send it to Superior Court. We, we just tried to analyze the issues, uh, independently to see whether we thought they were appropriate for the declaratory ruling procedure. That, that's kind of an ad, a, a reason, I think, for not to disbaring, if, if the parties have decided that there was a, uh, this resort to Superior Court was the appropriate remedy, but that's not the only reason for, I mean, came out where we did.
No, I think it's just one of the unlimited forms, the ultimate recommendation.
Questions, Emily? Helen?
I don't disagree with the recommendation, but what happens to these kids in September? Where are they going to go to school? I guess we, we're leaving that to a judge in July or August to make a quick ruling.
Well, well, kids have to go to school somewhere, certainly. Uh, my, I, I mean, a lot of things may happen, and we don't know where they might live now in, in, in 2023, maybe some, some of them may actually finish high school already. I don't think any of these kids were denied in the education because of this, it's just an argument over, over payment. So, uh, we have been concerned because, but certainly the kids will go to school somewhere.
Well, and, and Allen, and who knew that, uh, Basra has designated NFA as one of a couple of schools where kids can, where kids can go to high school. So if, if, you know, Bush came to show, and they were not able, if they were, he didn't have water and couldn't work it out, at the very least, those students could go to one of the other designated high schools.
And it is, and it's, it's better decisions need to be made every year, regardless of what happened in 2021, 22, 23. If the child, the student lives in Basra, at this point, if you establish residency, they can go to the school.
Any other questions? All in favor of executing their recommendation?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just, you want to separate Sharon Fuller, make the way to the table, but except the motion, Connecticut Guidelines for Educator and Leader Evaluation and Support 2023. So move.
Vice Chair Benham, board members, Commissioner Russell Tucker, good afternoon again. We are pleased on behalf of the Educator Evaluation and Support Council to present EDRF Guidelines for Educator and Leader Evaluation Support 2023. We wish to thank the members of the council and our facilitators from the RES Alliance at Excellence Income for their commitment to supporting Connecticut educators and leaders, leading to improved outcomes for our students. The Educator Evaluation and Support Council is codified in statute as the performance evaluation advisory council piece. We rebrand the name of the council to highlight that we're moving forward to improve educator evaluation support versus the initial task which had been completed. This year and for the past two years, the EDF Council stakeholder organizations were very relevant, and they include the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education of Connecticut, AETTE, American Federation of Teachers of Connecticut, AFT, Connecticut Association of Board of Education, K, Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent, CAP, Connecticut Association of Schools, CAP, Connecticut Education Association, CEA, Connecticut Association of School Administratives, CASA, Connecticut Federation of School Administratives, CFSA, Minority Teacher Recruitment Policy Oversight Council, Regional Education Service Center Alliance. And I also want to acknowledge that Sharon Fuller from the talent office was the lead person, uh, leading the effort for educator evaluation, along with our liaison, Erin Benham from the Connecticut State Board of Education, who participated in our, you know, council meeting. And I'd like to just take a moment, uh, we have the need of our council members here today, and I would just ask that they stand. Time commitment. The primary goal- Their time and commitment. The primary goal of the Educator and Leader Evaluation and Support System is to strengthen individual collective practices to increase student learning, growth, and achievement. Multiple stakeholder organizations engaged in a collaborative process during the past two years, which has led to unanimous consensus in developing the draft document we proposed to you today, identifying guiding principles as the basis for the new guidelines, reviewing best practices in other states, reviewing research from national experts, with an outcome, and that has been that the council develops a systematic process of continuous improvement in professional learning, leading to high quality professional practice and improved outcomes for students. The guiding principles highlight changes made from the current guidelines and include: They allow differentiation alone. They simplify and reduce the burden, such as eliminating technical challenges and reducing the number of test paperwork. They focus on things that matter. They connect to best practices aimed at the development of the whole town. They focus on educator growth, and they make meaningful connections to professional learning. They are specific, timely, ethical feedback. These guiding principles and the changes in the guidelines address concerns from educators and leaders about our current educator evaluation support system, and to date, we have received positive feedback that these changes are needed. With the closing of the legislative session just last week, we are still reviewing and analyzing new legislation and making adjustments as needed, and already identified a couple of items that we most resolved. The first being the update to the definition of teacher based on current legislation, and the update to the future resolution process to align with current legislation. And we did share that this morning in the political committee. Regarding our next steps, if the board approves this moving forward today, we will be providing professional development and training to all of our districts statewide, also professional development from boards of education, as well as to our partners in higher education that for our EDC programs who are preparing options for educators. Again, we hope that the board approves the plan that was placed before you, and I do want to thank again the EDF council for their time and commitment to this process. Thank you.
Questions, Emily?
I know a lot of you just went through that policy. I'm sure you asked a question on that. But I personally do also want to thank both Sharon and Sharon for the work and the entire committee. You know, it's been a long time. You know, you look back at this, started in March of two thousand twenty-one when we all came together. And for me, that spent a lot of time on the original plan that we had in place, the foundation plan, it was very, very welcoming to see everyone that we did see at that table was there. And I think that is so important. And as we move forward, the board should now show this, they will still be needed because one thing we all said when sitting there is the implementation of this plan is going to be key. And so our interaction with not just the educators and the administrators, but the boards of education that will be in charge of the PDAC committee is a big lift. And they have, you know, now they have a plan in front of them, a year for their planning purposes, and a lot of planning that will take place. So I thank you, thank you both for really leading this amazing challenge. And how well it all came out. So thank you very much. There's nothing else on the board? All in favor of accepting the new plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
With your permission to share, my thank you as well to our team here, Dr. Tucker and Sharon Fuller, but for those who are still in the room as a part of the council. Thank you. I remember we had a lot of conversations during the legislative session and constantly going back and reminding legislators about the work of the council and the hard work of the council together. And so you can read a little bit, because we're going to do this against certification. And so we're doing a process on that. There's a one page in your package that's all around that. But we heard such positive news really about how this happened in the group together. And so now they're really forced to do that when we look at the certification regulation. So thank you in advance for that work, but thank you so much for doing that. It will benefit the state and all our educators across our system. So thank you.
Do you have any financial notes?
No.
We're going to move on to item nine, which is the consent agenda. Is anybody wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Alan? I don't so much want to remove something, but that's just a question I could ask, maybe. But am I right, it struck me that the two New Britain schools, maybe we should take the year. And is that something, am I right, are they higher than most other places? And if so, we should probably pick this up and talk about it, but I don't know.
In this New Britain? I should answer that question.
And these towns, as you know, of the, all of the schools listed here have on to your accountability and support. So we can quite have to use, there's nobody to discuss, but I'll let I read, and the principal help with that.
Can you continue with my question?
It was, with this chronic accent, we've seen very high for the New Britain schools. And so it's an opportunity, I think, to talk a little.
Absolutely. And to our President, that we continually monitor our requirements of residency, but we do have a comprehensive advisor with us, so it might be fun for him to speak to how they are addressing chronic absenteeism.
Good morning. Reminding this to a guest from the New Britain, for the consolidated school district of the Britain. Yes, chronic absenteeism is another major concern. I'm finishing up my first year with the district. We have a model and has had a model that is really quite similar to the one that's endorsed by the State Department of Education League. What we're seeing now, looking at our hearing data, is a modest improvement of, I believe it's two point nine percent district-wide, plus perhaps more encouragingly, some of our targeted subgroups are seeing stronger than that. So students with disabilities, multi-lingual learners are actually seeing gains that are stronger than that. Somewhat interestingly, we don't yet have an explanation for this, is the gains are smallest at the elementary level and strongest at the secondary level. So we're seeing stronger improvement in chronic absenteeism in grades seven through twelve than we are in K through six. So our next work with our district-wide attendance coordinator will be to take a deeper look at that and see what we can do. We have family school liaisons in each of our elementary schools who take a frontline on this. I guess I would say, perhaps just to advocate for my colleagues, in my experience in my first year getting this on the district, I don't find anybody who's not working hard on this question. And I really do find people that they're within. They're doing home visits, home calls, they're doing interventions for the students who are, I put them both on the hot list, and they're doing recognition for their kids who have excellent attendance. They're doing parent events during school, after school. So it's not for lack of trying, and we're seeing, you know, less gains at the elementary level. But I have a lot of confidence that we're beginning to make more decisions in a way that's driven by evidence. We are shrinking the total number of initiatives that we're trying and really focusing on the ones that we think have the most promise.
Am I wrong to be astounded by those numbers? What we're seeing is around the state and our big studies board?
It really was a call to action, as you know, we've had that conversation around this table we got in City Parkwood, for example, large urban center. But it really just shows how multifaceted this effort is. And it is not a one and done. Right? Because you talk to families and their barriers, doesn't it? You know, there's no magic here in terms of working with families, and that's what the leave home visit program is doing. It's really trying to address those real fundamental barriers to say, what is it that families may need? When you think about the age, you know, when we think about the limits here, at the younger age, our younger students are more reliant on families than to get them there versus those that may be at the secondary level. I think, if I'm not mistaken, John and I saw the same with similar results, even probably the program, evidence-based program, that we had better impact at the high school level than we were. So we're still unpacking that. But it means that we have to focus and really try to understand it, student by student, what are those barriers? Is it transportation? Is it health? Is it all of those things that we think about the challenges of what's happening in communities? Are those children walking to school? Is there an issue of concern about safety? I mean, there's so much that I know that folks are fighting on unpacking, and they don't always bring in the solution. Right? So you have to continue to have that kind of multifaceted, multi-tonic approach to this particular issue.
And I like to answer from the accountability and support. It has been, you know, my two colleagues that are on that committee with me, it is something that we have been addressing now for a few years. We've had, have been monitoring that. And a lot of sharing going on in this particular, the accountability and support actually met twice since our last board meeting. And many of the sharing that went on, we even saw different schools picking up, we're going to try that. So there's a lot of sharing going on, and all of experiencing that, and some really great initiatives, innovative initiatives that we heard on for the last two meetings of the council. So it's promising, and it is an issue for many of our districts.
So Commissioner, would you say that this is not solely an educational issue, right? This is a crisis, a life crisis, manifested and discussed in schools. And I think there should be accountability across the board, not just in education spheres, but throughout whatever city or municipality, folks mediating together, really have a real conversation. This is a crisis, really is. So would you say that it's not solely about education?
That's exactly right. And schools cannot do this alone. And those are the conversations. John, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. You're so much closer to the work. But that's why, you know, there's talk, two things that happen here where you get folks in the room, and they've been invited, others into that space to have this conversation. That's why we're conversating with housing, but housing and stability, all of course, the four thousand students are experiencing homelessness. They're kind of, when you look at student groups, it really knows that of all other student groups. So those, that's why we have the data points that we do have, so we can disaggregate and really have those real conversations. But in some cases, these are indeed community conversations that we need to have. And so the school, certainly, it's what's inside and outside of school house doors. Right? There are those things that happen there, but there's a lot of this conversation. That's what the leave home visitors, I think, was so key, because they're also then making those outside of school connections. What are the services that you need? Is a child here? Is a child coming to school because they're doing child? I mean, all of these things are what they're unpacking. It helps to think about what the solutions are, and they truly are multifaceted solutions. But it is not about blame, and sometimes it's also thinking about maybe families, really understanding what is, so we can think about holistic solutions in this space. But I think it is important that those conversations are indeed happening, and that communities are involved in those conversations as well. That is the theory of the data points that we have, and why we really want to make sure we have those dashboards that families can understand, that communities can understand, because then it helps to have the conversation between all of that, school, family, and community, in addressing this particular issue. The liability or the responsibility is there because we're trying to get students, no matter what we do in classrooms, no matter how brilliant the curriculum, like I say, my quote, right? There's no curriculum brilliant enough to compensate for that. How does that occur? And so the education that needs to happen, you've got to address those fundamental needs before education, right? It's going to really, the impact will be there. So that's why we always talk about this is conversation for us to have across the board and at this agency level. That's why we have conversations with our sister agencies, to talk about what's needed to happen at the local level as well. John, did I miss anything? You know, I'm passionate about this conversation. We did tracking this issue of attendance for over a decade in this state, and I had, we had their alarm bell when our numbers were like ten percent versus doubled now. So this is something that we focused on. John is standing with the microphone.
Commissioner, you can, I think, you can move to that, certainly. The childcare issue is telling that high school students are missing school because of a lack of affordable childcare for the younger siblings. So the older students should stay home to watch their kids. Now that families are going back to work, you know, post pandemic. There is a crisis of available conditions in the community, the healthcare needs, right? So you're speaking directly to, these are not necessarily solutions, right? These are things that are happening that are impacting school. All of those things that, and I remember, I was in a meeting, it was telling me a while ago, and before the pandemic, well before the pandemic, schools decided that we were going to be able to handle the mental health of our students. And now, through the pandemic, we realize that schools can't handle that one. But still, as you mentioned, we're working with our agencies about how do we increase the number of behavioral health providers in the community, and what are you trying to get done to work in school? So all of those, as I said, are significantly different insults that students have in school. And that's what the committee program sort of gets at, what are the issues, and how do we get?
Thank you. I need a motion, but that's it.
So move. Second.
Colin Bevel?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. What will the committee report next? Harry Santos, we start with academic standards and agenda.
Vice Chair, we met on May fifteenth and drafted our meeting schedule, link dated going forward into twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. I believe our next meeting is July tenth. Is that correct, Ms. Irene? So I attend, though, next month. We were going to meet, that was the catch to Karen, we were going to meet on the nineteenth of this month, for, we want to honor some of our agenda. So, well, Karen said, well, I was prepared to ask. That's my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Academic, accountability and support. Like I said earlier, our committee met actually twice in between our last board meeting. And basically, the schools that we saw on the agenda for approval were the ones that came in front of us last meeting. We met with two of our charter schools. And accountability and support will meet next in September. Financial audit and budget.
Yeah, thank you. In April, we conducted interviews to fill the position for the trying to retire Nora Chapman. And recently, the committee interviewed a finalist, and an offer has been made and is being considered. So the only thing I can say right now is stay tuned.
Thank you. Connecticut Technical Education?
Can you hear me without the microphone? No. Thank you very much. So our G4 met last week, and graduations are underway, beginning tonight. I'll be a princess of their graduation, which takes like a central. We greatly pride our graduation rate, which is in the high nineties, and also our attendance rate is better than many of the LEAs. And it reveals, it talks, it speaks to what the students revealed earlier, that when the program's relevant, when there's work they're learning, to want to go to school. So I take great pride in our, in our numbers. Last week, seventy Norwich technical high school seniors were celebrated as they signed letters of intent for full competitions at graduation of their future employers. And last month, one hundred plus PTX graduating seniors signed a submarine, submarine and bachelor elecute boat during a Chinese ceremony held at Rockford Tech. Two plonk, they have agency hardback certificates, handshake from the Navy Administration, from Union Rats and from E D executives, who were workers, welders, electricians, pipers, painters, carpenters, shippeaders, and outside mechanics, and more. PTX Criminal Justice and Protective Services Program, and final tax, which regionally recognized by the United Department of Health and Human Services for their incredible work assisting response teams during hurricanes, and using the school's operations center, fifty-one didn't serve yet, eyes and ears for mental response teams on the ground in Florida, providing crucial information and assistance during hurricane vessels. If you ever had a chance to visit our program, dominated with screens, the whole, the charge that screens like that all throughout, and live time, every plane is in the air in the country, every emergency that's underway, every emergency in Connecticut that's underway, so live time, it's your monitoring. So I think it's pretty interesting. And finally, PTX met and exceeded the nationwide state's learning goal for the twenty
And finally, KET met and exceeded the district-wide, and put face learning mode for the 22, 23 year school year, with 1,197 students participating in work-based learning, job shadowing, and internship. That concludes my report. Thank you. Nasty?
Yes, thank you. Nasty, we'd like to get a better understanding of the priorities and activities of the member boards, and so there are going to be meetings in the Northeast region, which I'm the director of the Northeast region, we're going to have a Zoom meeting with board members on the Northeast region to communicate our priorities and activities. So Nasty's priorities are early childhood, education, assessment and accountability, scrutiny and staff wellness, recruiting and retaining educators, and high school redesigning. So in terms of this meeting, I feel the need to talk with somebody here on the board or in the department, so that I can communicate, right, our priorities to Nasty, they should be aware of, so, this is something, there's somebody I could be talking to about that.
When is this meeting taking place?
The same day. So I.
Talk Laura, I'm going to talk to Laura Stepan.
Laura Stepan?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you have a new report in front of you, the continuing great work that they're doing with PB and across the state with many of our districts, and possibly you might have the opportunity, we'll see how it works out, that we will all be going to this earth building, the new earth building for our retreat, if that can work out, that's what I requested, and angry would be more than happy to help us, but it's an amazing building that you build in the state, so, stations for that one.
Erin, what's the date for the?
It was, is that on? It's August 2nd or? 2nd, whatever on our calendar. I will send you new calendar invitations, because I stopped at June 14th, so I will pick up with the retreat and the rest of the calendar year.
It's kind of.
Not for all of them.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's still planted, sorry. Hopefully it'll get a confirmation then.
Okay.
A motion, Commissioner?
Oh, Madam, I see items for discussion, does that mean I can ask a question?
Oh, yes, you can. I'm sorry, Professor.
I saw the legislature pass a bill to, for non-gender people to be recognized on official documents, and I'm wondering if you have, if the schools have a policy on recognizing non-gender students, I said non-gender, non-binary students in schools.
Can I go to the Ajit in the face? Laura, I don't remember. I, I, I was, oh, sorry. Oh, we're, we're. I was just going to say, for several years, this state has been moving in that direction, and to update systems, the governor's office and Office of Policy Management have reached out to agencies to see what type of impact it might be. Fortunately, every year that I've spoken to Ajit about it, it does not impact us, because he's already done it, and so our data collections are already mindful of that, and so it will not have, it should not have an effect on the, the data.
Well, I mean, recognizing non-binary students in schools, is that, is that paying on as far as, you know, bathrooms?
What is your definition of recognize it?
So we were, yeah, like, providing bathrooms for, for non-binary students?
I thought that was, they were making, just moving in that direction already, but we can get further information, I'll contact for your interest.
Do you have anything?
Oh, I was just going to say, in terms of recognizing gender changes or non-binary identities, there has to be legal documentation, or the school won't, like, judge names, but, and then also with bathroom situation, it's kind of like, again, district to district, school to school, for example, like in my district, for example, the high school just got one bathroom for the whole high school, a gendered bathroom, and then there's efforts to do that for middle school, but not really, you know, been successful thus far, so it's kind of a slow-moving process, but it depends on who retended, both Board of Ed and what their competition is.
So I'm wondering, we got a role in ensuring that that takes place, just wanted to bring that up.
Laura, we wanted to check to make sure that the protections, protections in the law in Connecticut has been ahead of other states, in terms of what's required to, and so we'll sort of take a look at that.
And so, the new built schools will see the difference as far as bathrooms, where they're all changed over, I'm guessing there's some expansion, like, to do in current buildings.
My school was built in like, the 60s, right? I think it was in the 80s, so we had to convert one of the bathrooms that was used for, like, students going to the nurse, so there's a bathroom right next to nurse, they converted that to a little bit of a bathroom, but my district is not planning to renovate the high school, which is a point of interest in my district, so there's not really an opportunity to add bathrooms.
Thank you. Motion, Commissioner? Okay. Okay, board members, lunch is in hearing room J, and I had told the new deputy commissioner how the board would love to have her at lunch, and our numbers are low today, so if everyone can make lunch, it would be appreciated.
No pressure.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.